Okay, Brian, you okay?
Whatever your... We are ready, sir.
You're on the record?
We are on the record.
Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, March 26th. It's about 8 o'clock. This is the planned zoning commission meeting for Tuesday, March 26th. Today of a public hearing, a general meeting, and that's about it. Kevin, would you like to...
Sure. Three items on the public hearing. First item, proposed amendments to Darian zoning regulations, COZR 3-2019, filed for by Cumberton Pin 16 LLC. Proposal to add a new section 597 to the Darian zoning regulations to allow for the creation of housing for persons 55 years of age or older within the Leroy Rest... Last Affordable Housing Overlay L W Zone, where one member of at least 8% of the occupied units to be 55 years of age or older. The full text of the proposed zoning regulation amendment is on file, available at the Town Clerk's office and at the Planning and Zoning Office for inspection and online at darianct.gov/pzc.
You all have in your packets the submitted materials from Robert Maslin on behalf of the applicant. Town Council is in the process of reviewing those materials, and there's a lot of legal questions in here he's looking into. So, we've reached out to Mr. Maslin, said we'd prefer to have those answered before we have the hearings. So, Mr. Maslin has agreed to have the hearing continued. Suggested date Tuesday, April 23rd at 8:00 p.m. in Room 206 of Town Hall. There are some members of the public here. I've suggested to them to send in their written materials to us, which will allow Town Council to hear from the neighbors as well as Town Council tries to interpret what Mr. Maslin's putting forth. So...
So, not opening up to public because Mr. Maslin hasn't been... Is not here to present his case?
He has notified the neighbors, so we'll continue it. Continue it Tuesday, April 23rd, 8:00 p.m. in Room 206.
So, we're not going to get started today because the...
Correct.
Well, just immediately continue.
Right, exactly. Okay. So, if you hear from the public relative to Cumberton Pin 16 LLC at some of these Leroy... Leroy, we're not going to be talking about that, so see you for next time.
No need.
Thank you, sir.
Item number two, coastal site plan review number 339, flood damage prevention application number 392, landfilling and grading application number 452, John Erickson, 17 Baywater Drive. Proposal to raise the existing dwelling and to construct new residences below the same location that installs a new storm water management system, inform related site development activities within regulated areas. The point course acre subject property is located on the south side of Baywater Drive at the southeastern corner of 4x intersection with Maple Bar Road, and is shown on a social map number 55. Lot number 99, the R and B E zone.
You have the application materials prepared by Chad Naring. Chad has done a number of replacement houses in Norroton Bay over the past handful of years. Subject property is three doors down from the Roanoke Dock. This will be a replacement house of what's there. These typical issues you've seen in Norroton Bay, where the new house will have to be elevated to be at least one foot above the base flood elevation of 14. The AC units and generator will also need to be elevated on the platform and screened, which is the requirement down there, to minimize noise and visual impacts. As you know, we're a property right on the water. Typically, we only address water quality. We don't hold back water. So, the plans show Coltech units in the backyard to address that first flush of water. Artel Engineering has done the engineering on this. It's an application for coastal site plan review, flood damage prevention. You see Kevin Archer, the engineer, has submitted certification of flood elevation. Flood vents are shown in the architectural plans. Typically, in a case like this, the commission will require a flood elevation certificate once the project's done to ascertain that everything is at the proper height and that flood vents have been properly installed.
That's how the survey is required.
That's correct. So, Chad Naring is here to answer any questions and tell you a little bit more about the project.
Good evening. My name is Chad Naring. I'm the architect for John and Allegra Erickson at 17 Baywater Drive, and with me is Michelle from Artel Engineering.
Could you just spell your last name, please, Chad?
Sure. Naring, N-E-H-R-I-N-G.
Thank you very much.
I think we all know what Baywater Drive in Norroton Bay is. It's a very nice neighborhood, full of closely dense houses that abut the Long Island Sound, and 17 Baywater Drive is just to the north of the Long Island Sound. There's an existing structure on the house... On the property, which is a single-family residence with a first-floor elevation of 11 and 1/2 and 13,3. There's some steps in the existing first floor, and there's also a walk into basement from the exterior. One of the rare things nowadays is we're actually making this project smaller than what exists today. So, we're reducing impervious coverage substantially. We're existing at about 17.2%, and we're going to be reducing it to, I believe, right around 14 and 1/2%. The new residents will meet or exceed all the FEMA regulations and have a first-floor elevation of 16.0. The garage will have an elevation of 10.3. We'll have three sets of egress stairs on the exterior of the building, one at the front door, one at the back deck going out to the backyard, and one on the side, which is also common with the mechanical pad on the eastern side. We'll be sculpting the grades to comply with some of the new building regulations from the 2015 IRC, and the... We'll be meeting all the zoning and building regulations. Another odd factor of this is we did not have to go for a single variance for this project. So, that's a first, I believe, on all the projects I've done in Norroton Bay. The structural design, we'll be using a footing system with foundation walls that will all be designed to resist the flood damage and impacts. We'll have crawl space under the main living area. The house, the slab on that will be pitched to the smart vent, foundation vents. The idea is the water can come in in a flood situation. The house absorbs it. After the water recedes, it'll then flow back out. First floor will be set at 16. All of our mechanicals will be above the base flood elevation at a minimum height of 15. The floor joists will be anchored to the foundation walls to prevent flotation, collapse, or lateral movement. Certificate of flood elevation has been prepared and submitted by the Archer Engineering Company. All mechanicals will be set above 15, and the propane tank will be buried and anchored to a concrete slab, so to prevent flotation.
So, you're going to sink the concrete slab and then...
Correct. Yeah, we actually excavate down.
Is that...
Yeah, there's two ways to do it, and that's what a lot of people do, is you basically...
Because, I mean, it makes sense, because if it wasn't anchored to a slab...
It'll fly right out. Yeah, so this is a... It's anchored to a concrete slab. The tank is then large enough. The other technique is to have several smaller tanks that are all anchored into the earth. So, this is a preferred...
Can I hold you for a second?
Sure.
Can you just show me on the elevation plan where the mechanicals are? I'm looking at pages K6 and K7, I think. SK6 and SK7. I know you said they were going to be about the flood elevation. I just didn't see the condensers or whatnot.
Yeah, the actual condensers aren't drawn on it. On the...
They're all or not drawn?
They're not drawn, physically not drawn, but the pad is drawn. So, we look at...
With the pad, the pad's got to be up in the air.
Yes, K6.
Top 200 garage.
That's good stuff.
So, we've got a five-foot platform. The grade around there is 10. It has to be at 15, so it'll be this... Chad, in fact, that's the question I had to Chad before you made it. Five-foot-high platform with a little screen around it, and then Chad mentioned there also can plant some trees.
Yeah, we'll do some evergreens that way.
Can you just plug in your mic?
Yes, sir.
Can I just plug in, Chad?
So, on the eastern side of the house, there's the sidewalk outdoor.
Six.
So, the six here. So, this sidewalk outdoor, we have a pad right there, which on plan...
Let's go back out to the site plan. It should be the second floor.
So, we are right here. So, here's the door up the stair. Here's the pad at 15 and 1/2.
Okay, yeah. Yep. So, this cuts in?
Correct. Yeah, so that is... This will wait here. So, we've got an area that's about, I think that's 10 and 1/2 feet by close to 9 feet the other direction.
It's the same thing here.
Yep.
Exactly.
That's actually on the second floor, so that's...
It's a pretty big pad, right?
It's interesting. So, there's a... When you do all those condensers and the generator, they all need certain clearances. So, it's one of those things, you just can't push it right up against the wall. There has to be some air movement around to allow those to operate properly.
So, this is... It's in the front yard?
It's in the side yard. So, in our site plan...
Okay, it's inside yard.
So, it's our eastern side. So, this is... Here's the waterside in the blue.
Yep.
Our house is situated with the garage in the front, the front entry. This is the Frank Residence to the east, and our mechanical pad is here, tucked between the garage and the stair down to the side yard.
Did you have a professional speak?
Would you like to, or just feel questions?
I could... I just... We designed the...
Could you introduce yourself?
Sorry, Michelle McColi from Artel Engineering.
Could you spell your last name?
M-I-C-O-L-I.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We designed the storm water to capture and treat the water quantity... Quality. Because we are reducing the impervious areas, we are reducing the flows to Baywater Drive and to the Long Island Sound. There'll be three Coltech units in the rear to treat the roof runoff, and there'll be two in the front that'll treat the runoff from the garage, the water quality volume from the garage. It's pretty straightforward.
Do you really need my escape and transport services, Jeremy?
No.
You all set?
All set.
I'll start with Sam. Mr. Ray, you have any questions?
I have no questions.
No questions?
Kevin? If anybody in the audience likes to speak to this application? Steven, Jeremy, anything you missed?
Uh, no.
Another question to... Anything to close this hearing? Move. Give a second.
Okay.
A favor?
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
For free public hearing, planning, filling, and grading application number 451, Michael Gaddy, 145 Old Peace Highway North. Proposal to restrict 20 by 40 square meters, create a rear yard, create a regular yard, inform related securant activities. The 252% of the subject property is located on the south side of Old Peace Highway North, approximately 100 feet west of the intersection. Area land is shown on a social map 34, a lot number 24, the R1 half zone. Hearing to be opened and immediately continued to April 23rd, 2019, again, Room 206. Correct?
That's correct. You have Fred's staff memo in your packet noting, we're waiting for a little more information from the applicant, and we're hoping the commission will immediately continue it to April 23rd to give them more time to revise the plans and get us that information.
Great. Moving on. Item number four, and the first item of our general meeting, is amendment of business site plan number 291, landfilling and grading application number 378, Old Town Hall Homes, 719 Boston Post Road. Request for amendments to previously approved plans.
Todd McClutchy and Michael Weissbrod, Crosskey Architects are here to walk you through a little bit some of the proposed changes to the approved plans for this project. As you've all seen, the demolition has started. It's complete, and the next step for them is to get the foundation-only permit for the foundation of the new building. But as they're fine-tuning the construction plans, they realize there were a number of, call it minor modifications, and so I asked for you to come by and run through them very quickly with the commission in terms of what have been changed and the reasons for change.
Please introduce yourself. You're welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Michael Weissbrod with Crosskey Architects in Hartford, last name W-E-I-S-S-B-R-O-D. So, as Jeremy explained, there are, excuse me, several things that we're bringing into focus now that the drawing sets are more or less permit-ready. There are five things that we'd like to discuss with you tonight, all outlined in the letter that I sent over. The first of which is the parking layout, which I think is probably the most significant of the changes, although it is fairly minor.
Oh, you need to stay by the microphones, please?
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Move this back.
That's a great idea.
Hopefully, you can all see it. I'm not sure how many of you are here. The existing small building there is actually an EMT dispatch center, and there are going to be several spaces in back of the building that are used solely for that purpose. The previous plan that was approved did include a handicap space directly in the back of that building. So, we're proposing, now that we have the understanding that that's going to be used solely for the EMT dispatches, to move that handicap space closer to the main entry of the building, adjacent to the other handicap space, given that the nature of the proposed main building is elderly housing. We feel that they would get more use there. In doing that, we were able to combine the cross-hatch spaces of both the handicap parking spaces, gaining a little bit of extra space. And in doing so, that freed up a little bit of space by the existing building, too. So, we're actually able to squeeze in two extra parking spaces with this change. There are a couple of other second and third order effects that did occur with this, mostly on the engineering side. There are some small catch basin changes, as well as the storm water detention system gets configured ever so slightly underground, but it's in the same location. And the other, I'll call it, small change is the walkway in the back of the small building. It was going straight out to the parking lot before, but we're actually curving it perpendicular with the back of the... Parallel with the back of the building to allow for the potential for a future garage for the EMTs to use in the future. So, that's the first change that is proposed.
Hold you one second?
Sure.
Right now, you have the EMT building or two chase cars inside pop tents? I mean, they're not depicted on the plan here, and they're not yours. How does that lay out change in here?
I'm not sure of the size of the tents. You know, whether they go with tents or a permanent structure in the future, we're not entirely sure, but we are providing them with the flexibility to go with a more temporary structure like the tent or a permanent garage if they do so choose in the future.
So, I'm looking at the plan that we have, which is a little bit different than yours, and maybe Todd can answer this. Can those two cars sit here now? It looks like they're... I would assume they were bigger now than what you're giving them.
It's just a little building.
Yeah. So, two cars parked right here today in pop tents. Granted, I think if you're building a beautiful project, those pop tents are pretty...
Yes.
So, I don't know if you're going to offer the town to say, "Build your new ones and get rid of those ugly ones."
Well, that has not been offered, but so...
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Yes. My name is Todd McClutchy. I'm the developer for this development.
Could you spell your last name?
It's MCC, W-T-C-H-Y.
Thank you.
So, the town has a right to use six spaces that are closest to the existing historic building, and so what we're looking to do as part of this whole relocation is move that handicap space, which will not be utilized by the dispatch, and create some more space, whether it's the pop-up tent or something more permanent in that location. So, we're allocating new space where the EMT dispatch can be located and making sure that it can accommodate whatever structure may go there in the future.
Is that what you... It just... Maybe mine might be different than yours, because mine doesn't have the cloud around it.
Yeah, one of the... One of the plans shows the cloud around it. It's the layout plan, I believe, which...
I'm on layout plan 2.0.
There were two sets of plans submitted. One was the original approved plan, and one is the proposed.
I got it.
So, you're probably looking at the original plan.
Certainly.
Because, I mean, I think adding an extra parking space is a great idea, two extra parking. And I think moving the handicap is a great idea of just...
Yes, you need to get to the bubble one in order to...
I got it. It just doesn't sit... To me, it doesn't seem you have enough space for the chase vans. Are those chase vans supposed to sit in those two spots inside the bubble or not?
So, the town has six spaces. How they use those six spaces is up to the town.
Oh, so the town can take these six right there?
Yes. It is the six closest to the house that are dedicated.
I thought there were two additional spaces that are going...
Nope.
Inside your curb... Inside your curbway.
Because the two additional are all accommodated on the interior parking component.
Understood. Okay. With the new handicap marker there. Got it. Okay. Please continue.
So, that was one of the five changes that we are proposing. The second change is along the entry drive on the back of the site. The original design called for a modular block retaining wall to deal with the grade change along the drive and the grade on the other side. That retaining wall would have been vehicular rated. As we started to look into the details a bit more, we feel that actually pushing the retaining wall back a bit and not using the retaining wall as the vehicular guardrail, but adding a Merritt-style parkway timber guardrail would be more aesthetically pleasing and a bit more durable. So, we are proposing to make the change along the drive there as well. The other change we're proposing...
It's going to have wood on top of the stone wall?
The stone wall will be a separate element from the timber guardrail. So, there's a...
Those are the squares.
So, there's a detail shown, I believe, on sheet L 5.2. So, it kind of gives you an idea of the cross-section that we're proposing. So, again, the block wall is a separate element pulled back from the retaining wall itself.
L 5.2?
L 5.2.
I'm sorry. We need to unfold 5.1 to get... It's going to have a...
L 5.1 has the original detail. That's why that was included.
Okay. So, that's two.
Mm-hmm.
Just three to go.
All right. The other three... The last site change is with respect to the dumpster enclosure. All we're proposing to do here is rotate it ever so slightly, so it's a little bit easier for the dumpster truck to come and pick it up and move it without having to come in at a weird angle. It's in the same location. It's just rotating it ever so slightly. If there are no questions on that, I'll go into the fourth change, which is building-related.
The dumpster's back in the corner on the upper left.
Correct. And again, we're not proposing to move the location, just to rotate the enclosure ever so slightly. The fourth change is architectural-related. I'm going to go to the exterior elevations for a moment. The original building was designed with five false chimneys at the roof line, both to provide some aesthetic elements, as well as to provide a means to enclose the mechanical penetrations in the roof. As we're going through some final coordination with mechanical, we realized that the chimneys aren't big enough to house all of the mechanical penetrations. So, in the outline that you have in front of you, there are really four elements that we have in terms of mechanical exhaust. One, we have clothes dryers. Two is kitchen exhaust. Three is bathroom exhaust, and four are the furnace exhaust and intakes. We felt it would be best to conceal the furnace intakes and exhaust, given that those are the most unsightly in the chimneys. And the rest of the exhaust, we plan to distribute on the backside of the roof away from the main street, as well as doing some sidewall penetrations on the far, far backside of the building with the dryer exhausts. So, I'll kind of walk you through those on a separate plan.
You've got a lot of discussion about those chimneys. Some of them are...
This is M 1.4. It's the mechanical roof plan.
Does all of you have the structure?
Well, Michael, not changing the chimneys. These are the same chimneys.
Correct.
They've been approved. In fact, chimneys have to go the same size or...
Exactly the same size as was approved.
So, there's no change. What they're doing is adding on some other vents throughout the building to get the necessary venting that didn't fit through the chimneys. So, there could be a few sticking out the side, in the back, out the roof in the back, but the chimneys are the exact same.
We're going from four to five? I mean, five to four?
No, the quantity will stay the same as approved.
I was saying it was five to four.
Not sure I said that. There are five chimneys approved and five chimneys proposed.
The chimneys have to handle all...
Okay, great. All right. Just a second. See, I'm...
This is where the... Where inside the...
There's a cupola on the front of the building, but there are one, two, three, four, five chimneys on that plan.
And then what are the extra ventings? It's the...
So, all these little symbols are the other vents. So, the ones that are tagged REFA, those are the kitchen riser exhausts. So, those will stick out of the chimney a bit. Those deal with the kitchen exhaust for the stack of three units below that riser. There are some units in the front of the building that we will be elbowing the exhaust within the attic, so they don't penetrate the front of the roof facing Boston Post Road. So, there are several locations where we're offsetting in the attic, just to provide a clean roof in the front. We're taking that same approach with the dryer exhausts as well. In most cases, the dryer exhausts come up in a straight line with the riser below and penetrate the roof there. Again, on the front of the building, we are proposing to elbow them in the attic, so they do not provide any penetrations in the front of the building. The bathroom exhausts all tie into an ERV mechanical unit in the attic, which is an energy recovery ventilator that has a louver facing the side of the building, which is disguised as one of the gable elements, which I'll talk about in a minute. And as I mentioned before, the mechanical exhaust and intakes for the furnaces are all concealed within the chimneys, and there's just barely enough room to fit those elements in there.
Is there much changing on the facade that faces Academy Street?
Zero.
Thank you. That's...
And then...
Top nose.
That was our goal.
It may support it, because you drive down, I forget what that street is, and it then ends at Academy, and everyone makes the right, and that's what they're standing. That's what they're all...
So, there are a handful of dryer exhausts where we're not proposing to go all the way up to the roof, just given their location. Towards the back of the building, there are a couple that we just want to go straight out via the side of the building with a small 4x4 dryer vent that you would see on a house. Nowhere close to the street. There'll be another one kind of tucked back here, facing the back. You wouldn't see it from the road.
Does every unit have a washer dryer?
Yes.
They have a hookup or they have a washer dryer?
Hookup.
Okay. So, it's possible that not every single one of them will have one.
Correct.
But they will have vents. It's standard practice on every Abrahams project and every Seth Bernstein project.
And I'll show you just where those occur on the outside of the building. The elevations are pretty close.
Make sure they're...
So, I did my best to highlight these in red on the next sheet, A 202, which is the exterior elevations. As you can see, there are only a handful. One on this little return, as I showed in the last plan, facing the back of the site. And there are two groups on the very far back of the building, again, facing the rear. So, you would not see this from the road.
Okay. From the two roads.
Correct. Right. So the last change that we'd like to run by you, and this is really just running the concept by you at this point, because we're not sure if the project can afford it as of yet. We'll know more once we get further into construction. The main entry of the building does have some cantilevered second floor to protect from the elements for a portion of the path from the front door to the drop-off area along the entry drive. But there is a good portion of that walkway that is uncovered from the elements. So if the budget allows, we were contemplating kind of creating a covered promenade from the rest of that cantilevered element to the drop-off area, using the style of the building as inspiration, so to make it, it kind of blend with the architecture that's already there. So we did include some renderings and some elevations of what that might look like, but it's essentially using the same vocabulary as we have on the front portico of the building.
And where's the drop-off area again? The drop-off area is on the side of the, yeah, east side.
So trip back to the site plan for a moment. The drop-off area is just beyond Boston Post Road. There's a little spot to pull in to drop off passengers.
And so if you overlaid it on this plan, where it's going to stick out?
It's basically, so here's your, your main entry overhang right here. The covered walkway would come out, follow the walkway, and terminate at the end of the building.
Okay.
So it's covering sidewalk that's already proposed.
So perhaps an area to put a bench in front there, if people wanted to just step out there?
Yep. We do have some built-in seating under the covered entry as of now, but we could expand on that.
Jeremy, we could have, not come through after that. If you cantilever, it could increase the lot coverage by a couple of percentage points.
Yeah, I think they still have plenty of room in terms of lot coverage.
But I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, it makes sense.
It's a great idea. Cover the area for somebody to sit.
Who else wants to look at this today? We have four of us. I'd say it's such a minor change. It's the commission that just came in. No, I think it's great.
Hope we hit the budget.
Thank you. So do we.
You don't want fabric?
Or glass. I'd have a paper one. So this side is, Ken?
No.
Ken? Ken? Well, anybody in the public that's speak to this application? Saying none? Jeremy, what do I miss?
You would just need a motion to approve the amendments as proposed.
So approve the amendments I proposed, and if they do the entry where they do the intervention. Okay? I would add to the motion to approve.
Motion to approve changes of all of those?
Second? It's a second. All is a favor?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. You did a nice job, Todd.
Thank you.
Good to hear it.
Article number five on our agenda deliberation only following the, returning the following items that the committee proposed, that the committee knew to create identical applications in the 82. Plan point ingrained, application number four, 52, generic, and 75, Baywater Drive. Read these quickly.
I have one question that I don't think is per, the engineers tonight texted here. We just, they did say no variance. So one thing that sometimes strikes me is, even though it's not as wide, maybe as a structure, it can go up so high. How does the height of this compare? It's all within...
They were thirty-foot max. There have been a couple properties...
I thought I read though that it was going up to like forty feet.
Right, well, the peak, it can be, it's about thirty, but you take the average of the highest peak and the highest peak.
Right.
So there were, because in the Rothen Bay, you have to elevate.
Right, right, right.
There were a couple of people in the Rothen Bay that did ask for variances, and the ZBA generally was not receptive.
Oh, so we changed the rules?
Did not change any rules.
I was on ZBA again. So, but to answer your question, this side, I checked out, I meant to say for an application period, the size of the house. The height of the house is twenty-nine points, twenty-nine point five feet and twenty-nine six inches. The regulation is thirty feet. So they're half an inch. I mean, the trick is, you know, that's twenty-nine, twenty-nine feet here.
Right.
If you went like that, it's twenty-nine feet.
Right.
We don't measure to the peak. We don't, but we never changed it. So it does comply.
Yeah, I just wondered, and it's sort of not even specific to this, but when things look so dominating compared to all the neighbors, it's great on paper, and then we, I drive by, I'm like, oh my god.
What's interesting is, is we talked about at the hearing, is Rothen Yacht Club just a dereliction?
Right.
The one next to Rothen Yacht Club at number twenty-one, Baywater, just finished with O.C.'s house. And you have Sherry Frank's house, then this property. And then Mr. Cornackia is also working on Baywater. And then they just did the one at the corner of Baywater. So what we're finding is the whole street will be right up in terms of...
Okay, so it's not...
But Genevieve's house is short.
Genevieve's house is short, Sherry Frank's is short. For the time being, of course.
What did, what did, would do? The architect, Wood, did have the twenty-two.
For Mr. Cornackia, that was Lance Zimmerman, I believe. And then the other side was O.C., the O.C. house, I don't remember who the architect...
He's the architect on ZBA, he says so's Wood.
Richard Wood used to be on ZBA. I don't know which house he did.
I thought he did it on Wood's. Anyway, because, okay.
Okay, so that's not bad.
Any other questions with regards to that? Okay. It sounds like you got an approval to write it off.
Yeah, well, Fred and I will draft something for an upcoming meeting.
Okay. We'll do with that.
Soon.
All set. Good luck. Can I say this one to the joint committee?
Huh?
Okay, you want to talk to yourself? I said, can I say this one?
Yes, say that.
Oh, right.
Next on the agenda.
Next on the, is update for the Blight Committee.
So I'll have more in this in probably the next, Jeremy, month. There are currently three properties that are unwrapped of Blight. I can give you some more specifics on which properties they are. One has a couple of conditions, a couple of conditions which can be remediated by a demolition permit. One has four or five issues that can be remediated without a building permit. One of them is going to require a building permit, and there's some issues around there. And then there's a sensitive, another one, a third one regarding renters, that the owner is, I'll give you all more details on this, but I think we'll have, I'll kind of defer most of this till a month, because we'll have some more detail on all of this.
Relative to addresses and whatnot, you'd like to tell us the address, or you'd like to give, I mean, I know, watch out, T.
So, you know, it's a matter of public record. One of these is fairly sensitive, so I'll give the commission a spreadsheet that has the addresses and the issue, and I'll refer to them by their case numbers.
I like that, yeah.
That's right, very, very discreet.
Okay, you good? Except for the record, Bonnie, Kevin is our representative for the Blight Committee. You figured that out? April of May, it's March 19.
Oh, John Seeny had two comments. Let me pass these.
Shocking. You got a draft of the minutes in your packets?
Yeah, I have no comments on that, so...
Mr. Seeny's comments on page thirteen, paragraph five, at the end of line, B-zone DB, it said, "Mr. Seeny questioned, is that the question, whether the proper procedure would be to close the new zone, the application without..." He was very worried about the warning, that's for sure. Do you understand that change, Jeremy?
Yes.
Okay. Chairman Se's other comment was page fourteen, top line, revised two orders of 168 West Avenue, questioned how amendments would impact their property. Delete anything else. There's Mr. Aldo, and Joe Fisher, and it's proof. Is that ready? Yeah. I think Se's comment is more correct, right? And that's written here.
We can do it either way. We can do it the way it's written, or incorporate John's comment to be, I think John's comment's a little more gentle, I recall.
Yes. Did those guys question it? Did the, the process...
Well, that's the issue now. So certainly, John's correct, and they did question how this would impact their property.
Right. Okay. That's fine. Anything, anybody else? Kevin, you're doing it, and Jeremy, so you're doing it.
I would move to, move to approve with the amendments from John.
We got a second? Mr. Rand?
I'm sorry, John.
Ah, sorry, John. All is a favor?
Yes.
Kevin, you staying?
Yep.
Kevin was there.
And on the calendar, did we have, what was the night that you, that we were debating? The night that we...
I found the update in project status updated. I skipped that in the agenda, Sarah, Bonnie, whatever.
It's okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Which do you want to start with? The project status or the calendar? Your choice.
Let's go, Kevin.
Okay. Next week, we're not meeting on Tuesday the second, we'll be meeting on Thursday the fourth in this room.
Thursday the fourth?
Thursday the fourth in this room. Anyone can't make it? Jim? Four, four, or Jim? It's going to be a training session from, this group, from CLEAR. The training session will be open to everyone.
CLEAR, it's like an airport?
No, it's Connecticut Land Use Education.
How about one second? Do we have an agenda, if you are scrimmcing, if you're scrimmacing?
Yeah, I have something that evening. But do you need a quorum for this?
We do not need a quorum.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so no Liz Rita either?
No, no Kevin, right.
No Kevin. Okay, so, yeah, we don't need a quorum, so you three can't make it.
It's not, it is a meeting or it's not?
It won't be a meeting, but it'll be a training session.
Okay.
It'll be in this room, probably in a format like this. It probably won't last more than an hour and a half, starting at eight o'clock. So there'll be some folks from other towns here that night. That'll be the only item on the agenda, is that training, because we won't have a quorum. After that will be Tuesday, April 9th, which is a full public hearing night. We're going to start the public hearing on the cross-country path, which goes around the high school and through the adjacent Diller property.
Oh, yes.
I will not be here.
I will not be here.
Okay, four, nine.
Sorry, repeat that date again, the ninth.
Tuesday, the ninth.
Yeah, no, I'm here.
Jennifer?
No.
And so that will take a while. We're also going to continue the public hearing on the zoning reg amendments. And we're going to, also have a public hearing on the application of the municipal use zone. Actually, I apologize. It was supposed to be the ninth, and then when John Seeny realized that he also cannot be here on the ninth, we moved it to the eleventh. Thank you. So it will not be the ninth, it will be for eleven.
That's what I thought I had seen.
And that will be in the Mather Center. So Jim said you'd be back.
Leaving about eleventh.
Back Wednesday.
Oh.
You're back Wednesday night.
You come back in the morning.
Eight P.M. as usual.
Eight P.M. in the Mather Center. That's April eleven. So it's a very full night, because we have the zoning regulation amendments, we'll have the cross-country path, and then we'll have the application of the municipal use zone to certain properties. So your next two meetings will be on Thursdays.
Okay. And then nothing on the sixteenth, because we break?
April fourth is a Thursday.
And we don't know.
That's the training session. Thursday, April 11th. No meeting on Tuesday.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then no meeting School Vacation Week.
Right, my goodness.
And then we meet Tuesday, the 23rd, which will be a very full public hearing night. You saw the two continuations from tonight, and then there's a significant number of new applications that have come in that Fred and I have had to split into, some on April 23rd and some on May 7th. So those two nights will be very, very full.
And do we know the May, June, or no? Like idea? No. We wouldn't know now in April for May, maybe.
April very busy, no. And early May.
You're not reading on the sixteenth.
That's correct.